Good.
The fourth meeting of the 21st Council will please come to order. All council members are present this evening. At this time, we will have a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Counselor Gibson.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Civic parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take a dinner break this evening at approximately 7:00 PM. There are no proclamations this evening. There is no presentation on economic development. Are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Gibson.
Yes, thank you, President Sanchez. I do have a question about, on the consent agenda, about the committees. And for Mr. Perry, please.
Yes, ma'am.
There are two appointments to the Housing and Neighborhood Economic Development Committee, and I noticed they had not met for several years, although in the past year or so, there have been some appointments. And I was just wondering if there was, what may have happened that might have wanted them to resume their meetings again.
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, I don't have the explanation of that question readily available, but I will get it for you, and maybe even tonight, and try to get back with you with the information. If I can't do it tonight, I'll certainly get it to you within a day.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Benton.
I have a follow-up on the same question for Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry, I had a follow-up on that question, sorry. If you need to get the answer, could do that first, I guess.
And Counselor Benton, we can also wait until we get to that agenda item, to the consent agenda.
Sure.
And then we can pull that off the consent agenda and ask the committee at that time.
Yeah, I think that would be fine, so why don't we go ahead and move forward.
That'll provide you a little more time, thank you. Are there any other questions for the administration? Seeing none, let's move on to the Journal. Council Vice President Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the January 6th Journal.
We have a motion and a second to approve the January 6th Journal. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, that carries unanimously. Next items on the agenda are communications and introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Seeing none, I move approval of the letter of introduction.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Council Vice President Jones. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no, that carries unanimously. Next item are reports of committees. Counselor Gardenio, FGO.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee made on Monday, January 13, 2014, reports out the following items. In the matter of EC-1, 6, 7, and 12, and 13, that receipt be noted. In the matter of EC-4 and 5, that they be approved. In the matter of R-4, 11, and 12, that they do pass. In the matter of R-6 and 7, that they do pass as amended. In the matter of R-13, 14, 15, and 16, that they be withdrawn. I make a motion to accept the committee report.
We have a motion and a second to accept the committee report. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no, that carries unanimously. Next items on the agenda are deferrals and withdrawals. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a deferral until March 3rd on R-236. This is amending the downtown 20 sector, 2010 Sector Development Plan. And we are working with the planning staff and our planning staff to maybe make a few more small tweaks to this plan prior to its passage. I move a deferral till March 3rd.
We have a motion and a second for a deferral until March 3rd of R-236. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no, that carries unanimously. And I move deferral of O-58 until the April 21st meeting, and that is amending Section 13-2-5, 1994, to establish a criminal penalty for the violation of the Albuquerque Minimum Wage Ordinance. We have a motion and a second, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no, that carries unanimously. Next, I would like to defer item R-240 until the February 3rd meeting, and that is reaffirming the policy of the city that any and all improvements in the Rio Grande Valley State Park that are not listed as specific projects in the Middle Rio Grande Ecosystem-Bosque Biological Management Plan, the Bosque Action Plan for the Rio Grande Valley State Park, and the Middle Rio Grande Albuquerque Reach Watershed Restoration Action Strategy for the Middle Rio Grande Watershed are prohibited. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second until February 3rd. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no, that carries unanimously. And the next item is OC-1. I move deferral until the February 3rd meeting. We have a motion and a second for deferral. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no, that carries unanimously. We are now under general public comments. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light at the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, and then turn yellow indicating you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At the time the red light comes on and the bell rings, your time is expired. I will call three or four names, and once your name has been called, we have room up front for members of the public to come up and speak, be prepared to speak. The first speaker will be Janet McThellin, followed by Don Schrader, followed by Claudia Crawford, followed by Roger Mickelson. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Council. This is about the R-13-271, which I understand is going to be withdrawn. That's the proposal to increase the police presence downtown. I know I've spoken to some of you members in the council about this as a street performer for the last six and a half, almost seven years down there. It's impacted business for everyone. It has impacted, 14 businesses have left in the last year and a half, and it is no longer safe. And I've had people come up to me saying, "We need to do something. We would love to come here, you play, we would love to come here, go, come eat down there," but we, it's hard for them to come down there and say, hey, when someone's panhandling, people going into bars, panhandling. I can't afford a security guard. The other street performers and vendors that have left, they can't afford security guards either. One thing that you might want to consider is a sit lie ordinance similar to what is going on in San Francisco since 2010, where between 7:00 AM and midnight, if you are sitting in line with no purpose on the street, you are cited and/or arrested. If you can add to increase police presence, I would like to see a sit lie ordinance impacted. They also want to have convention business come here. The only convention we're going to get at this particular manner is a People Behaving Badly segment convention. And that is not what we need for the city. I can't afford a security guard. The other vendors, we can't afford security guards. So something has to be done, otherwise it's going to be repeated what happened Saturday night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Benton.
Thank you for coming down a second time, or probably more than that. You've been down here to speak, and I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to, since you brought up the withdrawal, I wanted to go ahead and just address that right now. And as you know, I sponsored the bill.
Right, you did.
I, we finally did have a productive meeting with the Assistant Chief and Chief and Area Commander, and it's, they're going to be filling in some gaps, primarily the big gaps that we have, which I think are primarily in the swing shift, in the evening especially. We do have our officers on the weekday, we have a pair of officers who are there, but we don't have them in the weekend. So with the new formula that we've, you know, that was presented to me and that's tentatively been agreed to, we are going to be filling in those swing shift positions and the daytime shift positions as well on the weekend. But I do appreciate your thoughts about the other things that need to be done, and clearly, I think there's a groundswell of agreement with what you're saying.
I know, my fans have said that on Twitter.
Yeah, there's a groundswell. There was a lot of positive feedback when I brought forward the legislation, and, but right now, we want to see if we can get this new plan to work, and I'm optimistic. I want to thank Assistant Chief Macario Page and Area Commander Jeremy McGray, as well as the chief, for working with us on that. But it's just the beginning. We, I think everyone recognizes, we've got to have a perception of a very safe downtown.
It's not safe anymore.
And I'm not going to jump out there and say that, or wave that flag, because I live downtown, and I think it's not significantly more unsafe than other parts, certain other parts of the city.
Yeah.
But having said that, perception is the better part of reality, and we've got to, we've got to do everything we can for our downtown, as you say, for our convention business as well.
Yeah, because the only conventions we're getting right now is going to be people behaving badly. You've seen those clips on YouTube, you know.
We don't need that.
Yeah, yeah, and in fact, I'm Twitter buddies with the guy who does that show in San Francisco, so that's why I got the information on sit lie. But I'd like to be back down there this summer, because I do have a big fan base, and I do have done very profitable in the past, and I would like to have my fans come down there and not have someone come in their face and stab them, or demand that they give them money, or take my money out of there.
Right. Well, thank you for coming to speak.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Thank you, Janet.
All right, thank you very much.
Don Schrader, followed by Claudia Crawford.
The words of the prophet Martin Luther King Jr. "Our economy must become more person-centered than prophet-centered. The evils of capitalism are as real as the evils of racism. The nations of this world are engaged in a bitter, colossal contest for supremacy. I'm sad to say that the nation in which we live is the supreme culprit. God didn't call America to engage in a senseless, unjust war as the war in Vietnam, and we are criminals in that war, the greatest purveyor of violence in the world today, my own government. We're called to speak for the weak, for the voiceless, for victims of our nation, and for those it calls enemy. What do they think as we test our latest weapons on them, just as the Germans tested out new tortures in the concentration camps of Europe? This business of burning human beings with napalm, of filling our nation's homes with orphans and widows, of sending men home from dark and bloody battlefields physically handicapped, psychologically deranged, cannot be reconciled with wisdom, justice, and love. The words of the prophet Martin Luther King Jr."
Next speaker, Claudia Crawford, followed by Roger Mickelson, followed by Pat Toledo and Andy Carrasco.
Welcome. Hello, my name is Claudia Crawford. I'm a master naturalist with the Bernalillo County Open Space. We have broad copies of a calendar we've just created called Seasonal Sightings along the Middle Rio Grande. Can you hear me?
If you could, bring the mic, there you go.
Is that better?
That's better, thank you.
This calendar records phenological information gathered by fellow citizens and then entered into a citizen science database called iNaturalist. It also includes the past 10 years, temperatures, precipitation, and depth to groundwater information. Our goal is to get other people to observe and record life cycles of plants and animals in Bernalillo County, and especially along the river. As you know, each year is different. Some winters are mild and others extreme. Occasionally, we even get decent amounts of rainfall. All of these events affect the timing of plants blooming and animals migrating and breeding, which is what phenology is all about. This calendar is just a beginning. Information gathered from many people will build a robust database so that we can get a better idea of what is actually happening in our community. Partners in producing this calendar include the Mid-Region Council of Governments, the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, the Bosque Ecosystem Monitoring Program, Rio Grande Nature Center State Park, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the National Wildlife Refuge System. We just wanted, for a change, to give you something to enjoy as we enjoy our natural world, and especially our Bosque. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Crawford, thank you. This calendar is magnificent. Thank you so much, it's beautiful.
Next speaker is Roger Mickelson, followed by Pat Toledo, followed by Andy Carrasco. Welcome, Roger.
Good, thank you, Mr. President, counselors. I'm here tonight to talk about East Central. Last council meeting, I discussed very briefly the proposed development of 13,001 East Central. We're in the midst of trying to resolve that issue, to get more information about what it is, how it is, how it will be managed, and so forth. The neighborhood associations in that area are extremely concerned. I find that that extends into a number of other areas. For example, we've got a lot of business closures. I took pictures in Four Hills Village Shopping Center, and by the time I finished taking pictures of almost 20 empty stores, I was a little depressed. There are cafes that have closed. In general, it's just not a healthy business environment. There's an increase, noticeable increase, in the number of vagrants and pretty aggressive panhandlers. There are people in that neighborhood who will not shop in nearby grocery stores because they get approached every time they go there. One trip I made, I was approached three times, walking between my car, the entrance to the grocery store, and back. So this is, this is a very difficult problem. APD does have tack plans in that area, there's private security, but this is not something that can be dealt with by a presence. There just aren't enough police in the world to do that, so that's a difficulty. So I think anything that can be done in that area, the sector plan, the metropolitan redevelopment that has seemed to come to a standstill, that will help. I did notice the support for funding for the purchase of properties in target areas to remove blighted structures, and the proposed legislative policy. That's an excellent idea. There's one store down there that has been boarded up for 15 years, so we need some help on East Central. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Toledo, followed by Andy Carrasco, followed by Vern Usher, followed by Richard Berish.
President Sanchez and council members, thank you for hearing me this afternoon. My name is Pat Toledo. I've lived in Albuquerque all my life, and my almost weekly visits to the Nature Center along the Rio Grande have always been memorable. Along with the Sandia Mountains and the wonderful community here, the Nature Center is a treasure. The proposed intrusive action pending by the city is not welcome. There is a tipping point now in our fragile ecosystem along the Nature Center that has already been passed. The Bosque and the river are already dying slowly but surely. The time now is to protect and strongly defend what we have left before we are left with nothing. The Nature Center is not a commodity to be advertised or developed. It is simply a gift bestowed upon us that now needs more hands-off than hands-on. The almost unanimous and huge opposition to this proposed intrusion has not been respected by the mayor and the city. The nearly unanimous voices sitting behind me are shouting no to this proposed plan from the mayor's office. Hands off to the Nature, hands off the Nature Center. I also wanted to bring attention to another possibly devastating intrusion to the North Valley. Smith's Gas is proposing a new gas station, a super volume, 7 million gallons a year, with approximately 60 tons of VOCs annually along Fourth Street at the old car wash next to Deon's. Most gas stations in Albuquerque pump just over 1 million gallons a year. The big ones like Costco operate in more industrialized sectors on the outskirts of town. The Fourth Street corridor cannot support the increased traffic and congestion, and the neighborhood will be subjected to more deadly pollution and traffic danger. We are passing around a petition to request a public information hearing so people living in the area can voice their opposition or support for this huge gas station that will substantially change Fourth Street forever. We will request a traffic study and an environmental study be done before Smith's is given a permit. The last thing people living in this area would request is another gas station. Please sign our petition, and thank you for all the hard work to help the Nature Center survive. Both these issues, the Nature Center and the gas station, give our community a test to how we are going to respond to the greater issue of global warming. Go through all those pages in the Rio Grande Plan and the mayor's plan. Do they mention global warming even once? If they do not, the entire plan is without merit, is not current, and is uninformed. And because of that, the whole plan is obsolete, and they need to start all over again. Do we, as a community, want more development, more pollution, or can we take our foot off the gas pedal and let the earth begin to cool down and breathe again? I say slow down fast, thank you.
Pat, that's two minutes, 30 seconds. I told you I'd allow you the extra 30 seconds because Andy wasn't going to speak.
Great.
Is that correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. If you would, please hold your applause. Next speaker, Vern Usher, followed by Richard Berish, followed by Peggy Norton, followed by Anthony Aniella. Welcome.
My name is Vern Hooser. I live on the West Side. I am a trail watch volunteer in the Bosque, and I am concerned about the abuse of the Bosque. I am a little afraid of having a whole lot of people who don't know how to behave in the Bosque, turned loose in the Bosque. People, very, very few people keep their dogs under control on a leash in the Bosque. Hardly anyone picks up after them. 22% of the pollution in the Rio Grande comes from dog poop. Scientific evidence. You've just received a calendar, a phenological calendar. That was initially my idea, and I wrote most of the copy that you see in there. Most of that I learned from my own research and from my observations in the Bosque. And I think the Bosque is a very special place. I'm reminded, well, Mayor Perry seems to pay little attention to the massive opposition to his plan to flood the Bosque and develop the Bosque. And I'm reminded of President Theodore Roosevelt's comment when he first saw the Grand Canyon. He said, "Leave it alone, man can only mar it." And I think that is true of the Bosque. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Berish, followed by Peggy Norton, followed by Anthony Aniella. Welcome, Mr. Berish.
Thank you, Mr. President, counselors. I wanted to speak today to express my concern that the voices of Albuquerque residents are not being heard by the administration in the conversation about what is going to happen in the Bosque. The plans for development in the Bosque inside the levees appear to be still in play, in spite of the fact that large numbers of Albuquerque residents have expressed their very strong opposition to these plans, and very, very few residents have expressed support for these plans. There was a public meeting, I'm sure you know, on September 4th of last year regarding plans for the Bosque. About 400 people showed up at those meetings, and virtually every single comment at that meeting opposed the plans for the Bosque. At this point, there have been hundreds, perhaps thousands, of individual letters, email messages, and petition signatures that have been submitted that also oppose the plans for the Bosque. The city has not acknowledged these, and it appears to be ignoring them. The city has commented that the comments that were made at the September 4th meeting were simply an emotional outburst. The comments made by the citizens of Albuquerque demonstrate that what the citizens of Albuquerque want in their Bosque is they want it to be a place that is largely left largely undeveloped, where they can go to enjoy nature. They do not want their Bosque turned into a manicured urban park. They want it to be left as an essentially wild and undeveloped place to enjoy nature. The Bosque can be made more accessible so that Albuquerque residents can have access to the Bosque to enjoy nature without having development inside the levees. The Bosque plan is a solution in search of a problem, and a solution in search of a constituency, and I would very strongly urge the council to take whatever measures are necessary in order to prevent there from being development in the Bosque inside the levees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berish. Next speaker, Peggy Norton. Again, if you would, please hold your applause. Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Peggy Norton, and I thank you for taking the time to hear my comments. I've been a member of the Bosque Action Team for seven months, and active in submitting comments regarding the Rio Grande Vision for 12 months. I sent a letter to the editor stating the reasons I was opposed to the plan, and I welcome the Sierra Club taking action against the plan. I had the feeling my comments weren't being, were being ignored because the plan didn't change and construction was scheduled to begin last July. As more and more people found out about the plan, more and more people were opposed to the plan than have spent thousands of hours working to educate people and stop the plan. I submitted a request for release of public records. I have a partial release, and in that release were seven neighborhood resolutions opposed to the plan, none in support of the plan, and all but two letters in a packet that thick were opposed to the plan. Why is this plan going forward? We all, both sides of this issue, agree that the Bosque is a jewel. Why, then, do we want to change it and make it like every other place and destroy what makes it a jewel? Why can't we have quiet, sandy-in places trails? When we go to the beach, do we ask them to pave it over because we don't like walking in sand? No, we accept it, that's what we came for. I met a person yesterday who said that developing it like San Antonio is a great idea. I responded, "We have shops, restaurants, and bars all over town, why do we need them by the river?" I personally enjoy going to see cranes, geese, ducks and babies, coyotes and pups, beavers, turtles, porcupines. He responded, "That's all down there, where can I go?" I'm very glad to see city council starting to respond to the public outcry and want to support them in any way possible to stop the Rio Grande Vision, by passing bills, denying financial support, reallocating financial support. I think it is extremely important to protect the Bosque from the Rio Grande Vision, but also make plans for protecting it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. Next speaker, Anthony Aniella, followed by Ken Cole, followed by Tad Naminski, followed by Brenda Rodriguez. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is, excuse me, Anthony Aniella.
Thank you. My name is, excuse me, Anthony Aniella, and I'm co-author of two op-eds that were published in the Albuquerque Journal that are being passed out. The Basque really is a gem. It is one of those special places that distinguishes us from Phoenix, from Tucson, from El Paso, all those other cities that we compete with for attracting good businesses with high-paying jobs. It makes no sense to develop the Basque into a manicured urban park. And it especially makes no sense because of how the city and their contracted design firm is going about the planning of what to do with the Basque. There should be ecological science that is informing the design process so that we don't do anything that could potentially hurt the Basque. Let's keep it special. It's what differentiates us. Recently, the city did an audit of the Parks and Recreation Department, and that audit called attention to the fact that there is a backlog of maintenance. We think that until a well-informed plan to do anything with the Basque, a plan informed by ecological science is developed, that the $2.9 million should be allocated to maintaining the existing parks and recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker Ken Cole, followed by Tad Neminski. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Ken Cole. I'm an Albuquerque resident. I'm very active in public land conservation programs around the state, outside the state. And I think it's imperative that I be active in program to protect the Basque, the jewel we have in this city. I lived for a number of years in Washington, DC, at a time when the Potomac River was toxic. You had to have a typhus shot, typhoid shot, if you were bathing in that river, fishing in it, or whatever. That happened because people neglected taking care of their river. We have here a pristine river system, a special habitat, and as my friend Tony just said, I can conceive of no reason whatsoever to try to develop it in the mode of San Antonio or anyplace else where they put concrete around the river. I have the chance to travel around the world quite a bit. I see trashed habitat every place I go, sometimes caused by the good intentions of public servants, sometimes caused by people trying to take advantage, to their own advantage, to their profit of what is a protected system or should be a protected system. I hope the city council takes the time to learn a bit about the importance of nature, importance of our habitat, and will try to put some brakes on our city government as a go-ahead, full steam, as I say, to put concrete on our river, our pristine system, which is really very unique and very important. I thank you very much for your time and your attention.
Thank you for coming down. Tad Neminski, followed by Brenda Rodriguez, followed by Lee Whistle, followed by Robin Miller. And once your name has been called, if you would please come down and be prepared to speak. Go on, proceed.
Thank you. My name is Tad Neminski. First, I want to thank you, Ken, for having my mic up. Anyway, let me move on. Excuse me. Let's be go to mayoral appointees. Patty Anderson. How appropriate that can be. I remember Maxie and Ben Abruzzo when they flew for the very first time. That is, that's... Now, let me move back to another mayoral appointee, Roxana Mayer, to housing, neighborhood, economic development. Well, I believe that she ran for council seat. Well, if you don't let somebody go to the front door, come over through back door. That's what's going on right now. She lost it to Mr. Benton. Anyway, let me move on. Something what I witnessed yesterday between 3:00 and 3:15, there were two cars involved that I noticed after about 10 or 15 minutes of reading newspaper and observing, I noticed, first I noticed somebody were down. I conceived because the car was parked on the front of me, on the between, whatever I'm saying. So, anyway, somebody were moving and so on. The next thing was Lucero. I noticed he took his foot and started kicking her.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker is Brenda Rodriguez, followed by Lee Whistle, followed by Robin Miller, followed by Jeff Edgar. Welcome.
Good morning, I mean, good evening, councilors. My name is Brenda Rodriguez, and I'm a member coordinator for Working America. I've been here a few times before speaking in favor of supporting workers and making sure that our current minimum wage, our wage laws are being enforced. Every day I speak with members who are currently not getting paid the minimum wage and sometimes not getting paid anything at all. It reminds me that we have a lot of work to do and that we need to make changes so that our city does not fail our most dedicated workers. I was disappointed to see city council president Ken Sanchez say that he's considering imposing a limit on the Consumer Price Index. The Consumer Price Index is vital in making sure the wage keeps up with inflation so that minimum wage earners can afford bread and milk to feed their families. This is a measure that was overwhelmingly supported by 66% of Albuquerque voters. As you continue to wait on enforcement and President Ken Sanchez considers capping the CPI, I'm here to remind you that there are people who are still not getting paid the minimum wage, who are hanging by a thread wondering if their case is enforceable or not, who are looking towards your leadership, and I hope we are not left disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lee Whistle, followed by Robin Miller. Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable President Ken Sanchez and members of the city council. My name is Lee Whistle. I'm president of the M Series Union for the City of Albuquerque. I address you tonight for one simple reason. On behalf of my bargaining unit, I would like to respectfully request a raise in salary, especially what we're requiring, asking for is $1.1 million to be allocated for the bargaining unit to increase our wages to 2.5% across the board. I have attempted to open negotiations with administration to no avail. I have requested a presentation before the Guidelines Committee at no avail. I believe it is appropriate to inform you of our negotiation strategy so that you may appreciate the necessary funding. Earlier this year, a 1% raise was offered to all bargaining units, which was signed off on a good faith. Before the ink could dry, another bargaining unit was offered 2.5% with endorsement of the council. This generous offer to date has yet to be implemented. I will not accept the notion that the city council believes that the bargaining unit, those other bargaining units more worthy than the others. If I am mistaken, please do not hesitate to correct me now, please. For the sake of parity and good faith, we commence negotiations when this body announces an intent to fund our request. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Counselor, go to you.
Ms. Whistle, am I to understand, are you the only bargaining unit that has a contract now, or that has negotiated a new contract?
We're the only ones that are not under the Evergreen Clause. We have a contract right now with the City of Albuquerque.
And at that point, you had been given a certain amount of raise, I guess?
Well, in, basically when this all started, when the administration took over, we are trying to help out, is that me?
No.
Go ahead.
We are trying to help out the city because we heard that the city had, were kind of strapped. So, what we did was, the first year, we took a 3% cut, which is a furloughs. The second year, we ended up doing furloughs again, which was another 3%. The third year, we got a 1% raise, and that 1% raise went to increase because the insurance was increased. So, that 1% went to that. The last contract we did, we got a 1% raise, and that went to para. So hypothetically, when we did get raises, it didn't really go to us. It went to everything else that was being increased.
And, Mr. President, Mr. Whistle, so let me see if I understand this. You returned or did not, or were willing to give up 3% one year and 3% the next year. So, already you're 6%
Down.
In arrears.
Yes.
And then a 1% and a 1.5% were granted, but they were to keep up with some of the other expenses?
Yes, because when the insurance went up, we had to pay for that. When the para went up by 1.5%, we had to help pay for that. So, yes.
So, you're a net 6%
Well, I figured that, we calculated that if we're able to get the 2.5%, we should be almost whole from when the mayor took office the first time.
And when can you open up negotiations?
I have 60 days to open up, and the contract expires July 1st. So, we are hoping to try to get this moving a little quicker. Because it seems like every time that there's an issue in the paper regarding the unions, our local always gets addressed in there saying that we worked with the administration. We also took the union time, which we turned into a vacation bucket for us, where we can use that to do negotiations for, negotiations, hearings, arbitrations, and stuff like that. So, we like that. So, we worked with them in order to create that, to show good faith. So, our local has been doing everything we came to work with this administration, and I think it's only right, if you're going to keep throwing us out, you know, help us. Because with the increase of the money and stuff like this, daycare has gone up. People have to pay for that. You know, when we had the No Harms Bill, which was, we eliminate the No Harms Bill, what happened was is they gave you the right to adjust taxes here in the state, here in Albuquerque. Well, when you adjust those taxes, we get hit with those taxes just like everybody else. So, we're not really generating anything to help the working members. And we feel that we need to do something because we're the ones who make this city look good. We're the ones who, everybody comes to tour the city. So, you know, we should, I think all of us should help, you know what I mean?
So, Mr. President, you're just asking to be heard?
Yes.
So, that's the ask?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Vice President Jones, I think she has a question.
Actually, I wanted to ask Mr. Perry if he'd like to comment on this. Thank you, Mr. Whistle.
You're welcome.
Want me to sit down?
Thank you.
Mr. President, Counselor Jones and Mr. Whistle, I just want to express my appreciation for working with Mr. Whistle from the M Series. As I've pointed out before, there are seven different management groups within the city. The M Series represents management, basically, all the way up to, I think it's the M14 Series?
All the way up to 16s?
16s, up to M16s. And we do have a contract. We were able to get a contract with the M Series, and Mr. Whistle's leadership was submitted to the membership ratified for this year. It's important to recognize a couple of things. First off, that 1% was exactly what was appropriated. That's the biggest thing I had pointed out before. And, you know, people like Mr. Aaron Kahn, him and I had a very good conversation, and he pointed out to me something I could share with you. He said, "You know, what we're interested in is the appropriation." And the appropriation, basically, is what the salary increase will be. The administration can't go and exceed the appropriation in any case. And in the general operating budget for the FY14 for this year was 1%. And the management union came to the table, and we were able to put together an agreement to the credit of Mr. Whistle. Mr. Whistle had opened, had asked to reopen this fiscal year, looking at the possibility of an additional fiscal year. But that poses two problems. First is, I can't really sign a contract for a budget that hasn't been approved yet. That was the problem under the past thing. It was a three-year deal, subject to outbound fiscal years, subject to the city's financial condition. No one has a crystal ball. Things are looking up, but we know it's all tenuous. So, we're kind of reluctant to do that. We're also coming into a budget year where the budget process is at play. Probably, I think, we start CAO budget hearings beginning of February and ultimately submission to council staff and council shortly thereafter. And so, we'll be discussing the upcoming fiscal year, the FY15, with Mr. Whistle as well. Now, as far as the information that was provided, remember, remember, back in FY11, which was actually in '10, the city was facing a very significant budget shortfall, $66 million, just in the five-year discrepancy. And there was imposition of salary reductions for the M Series, and you have to be mindful that it was a sliding scale. The M Series actually had a 1.77% overall reduction. If employees made over $100,000, and I don't think any of them do in M Series, they would have a 3% reduction if you made 50 to 75. It was kind of a tiered scale. So, it was a 1.77% reduction. And I think Mr. Whistle's point about trying to be made whole is a valid point. And I think that's what the mayor wants to work with council on, is to try to take a look at these things, to get people out. And Mr. Whistle's membership, as well as a lot of memberships, as well as everybody in the city, sacrificed for that fiscal shortfall. And we are apparently in better financial conditions. But there's also external factors that have been voiced upon us. The state, through the PERA system, has also made it so that employees' contribution for PERA, Public Employee Retirement Association, their pension solvency has increased. And so, that is something that has also hit the employees. So, the harms that Mr. Whistle talks about are valid, but they have to be looked at on whole. And we are going to try to deal with this through council staff, through the budget process. And I know there's a lot of proposals, and we certainly have a police issue with recruitment and retention that was attempted to be addressed, and there was some financial incentive, and I applaud council for doing that because of the conditions. But I think we have to be particularly prudent in doing it, because it's kind of like physics. No one single action doesn't exist without a reaction. And as we go forward, if we're going to increase other people's, we have to be mindful of, you know, what kind of follows and the reaction. So, I appreciate the points that being made by Mr. Whistle. I enjoy working with him and his earnesty and his willingness to participate with us.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, sir.
Let's go and proceed. We are under public comment. We can probably discuss this issue during the budget cycle. We're not going to get this issue resolved this evening. So, let's go and proceed and finish up with the public comments. Robin Miller, followed by Jeff Edgar.
Mr. President.
Counselor, go to you.
It's all well and good, and I'm willing to wait till that time. I just hope we wouldn't allow some misinformation on either side to go, get out without it being addressed. Thank you.
Okay, Robin Miller, followed by Jeff Edgar. Welcome.
Thank you. I live in the South Valley. I lived in the Northeast Heights near the foothills trails for many years, and then I moved to the South Valley because I wanted an even more rural existence. And I'm very happy to live in a city that allows me to have the best of both worlds, to live in a city and to have beautiful, wild places right nearby. I'm a long-distance trail rider, and me and my horse train in the Basque, and I have a lot of friends who ride horseback in various parts of the Basque, either recreationally or for training purposes. We're terribly concerned about the mayor's action plan. Any development between the levees is going to have irrevocable impact upon the wildlife and the environment there. There have been an absolutely fabulous, impressive group of my fellow citizens who have spoken very articulately about the science behind why we should not develop within the levee. They did so at the September 4th, 2013 meeting that I attended, and the mayor's representatives and contractors at that time took detailed notes about all of the comments that were made. They had a flip chart. We had a flip chart. And as they wrote on their flip chart, we corrected them and made sure they were representing our comments accurately. Then, there was another meeting on the 18th of September. Well, all of a sudden, that was being canceled because they had to regroup after there was such a significant outpouring of passion to preserve the Basque the way it is. And ever since then, the mayor's office and Barbara Backa have been saying that they really haven't gotten any clear input, and they're really not sure where the citizens stand on this and that sort of thing. Well, I would like to know where that flip chart went and why they aren't looking at it. We have showed up again and again. I've gone to conservancy district meetings. I've gone to the public meetings on this issue, and I'm here today, and we're going to keep coming back until somebody acts like they've listened to us. Thank you. Thank you.
Jeff Edgar, followed by Vern Luce, followed by Saul Villa. Welcome.
Good evening, Presidents Sanchez and City Council members. My name is Jeff Edgar. I'm an Albuquerque resident. Um, I'm a trail runner. I enjoy the Bosque as well as the sandias. I'm here to speak, you know, in defense of the Bosque, the porcupines, and all the critters who live down there as well. I believe they deserve to be protected. We made it to National Geographic's radar to our situation down here. There's Sandra Postel, Director of Global Water Policy Project and Freshwater Fellow of National Geographic Society, um, wrote that hopefully the, the city with the Rio Grande running through it will step back and develop a plan that preserves the legacy of Aldo Leopold and his land ethic, and protects the ecological richness of the Bosque for generations to come. And I, I have to agree with that, and I'm just here in, uh, I'm totally against the vision. I think it should just be scrapped, and something that, that promotes conservation and protection of the Bosque as an ecosystem is put forth. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Vern Luce, followed by Saul Villa. And again, once your name has been called, if you would please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Welcome.
My name is Vern Luce, and I'm an Albuquerque resident, living in zip code eight-seven-one-one-zero. I'm also concerned about the Bosque, and Jeff stole my thunder. Uh, I have the website of the National Geographic Society here on my iPad, and I was going to quote the, uh, from, uh, from Sandra Postel's article as well. She is the Director of the Society's Global Water Policy Project, and she says that the, um, the Bosque in New Mexico is probably the largest, um, gallery of cottonwood trees in the world. And by some accounts, the stretch of the river in the Bosque through Albuquerque is the largest urban wildland in the world. So, we have an environmental asset of world-scale value, in the opinion of people who are knowledgeable and can form that, uh, can form, can form that comparison in that opinion. So, I think we should preserve it in its current character, and I'm, I'm also very concerned about the, uh, the lack of recognized input, or the lack of recognition of the input that the citizens are trying to make, uh, the residents of Albuquerque are trying to make, uh, in opposition to the mayor's Bosque action plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Saul Villa, followed by Miles Tokonow, followed by Andrea Serrano. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Saul Villa, and I'm an Albuquerque resident. I live in the South Valley. I grew up in the Blue Ridge Mountains in Virginia, and, uh, when I moved over here, you know, there wasn't, I, I love the Sandia Peaks, and, uh, I want to talk today about the Bosque and the mayor's plan. Um, I was at the September meeting, and I, I heard all the support against the plan. And I talked to my neighbors, and really, we don't want any development in the Bosque. I, I have two dogs. They both enjoy walking through the Bosque, and I believe that that money that could be used for that plan can also be used for protecting, just maintaining the rest of the parks in the city, and that the Bosque should be left the way it is. And I, thank you.
Thank you. Miles Tokonow, followed by Andrea Serrano. Welcome.
Good evening, council. My name's Miles Tokonow, and I'm deferring my time to Denise Alvarez.
Um, I wanted to voice my concerns about, uh, the Bosque. I think that the people's voices aren't being heard, and they're not very, they're not taking into consideration what the people really want. I think that the voices are being ignored about how people really want the Bosque to be left alone, how people don't want anything to be done to it. In the draft about the plan, they have words like enhancement, and I think that's code word for improvement. And I think the people are making it very clear that they don't want anything to be done in the Bosque. They want the Bosque to be left alone. They want it to be left the way that it is, and it's, it's the people's, um, it's a people's place. And I think that the people need to be heard, and Albuquerque is the only place with the Bosque, and we want to keep it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Serrano, followed by Colombe Leland, followed by Mike Gomez, followed by Rob Chavis. Welcome.
Good evening, Council Presidents, uh, councilors. I'm deferring my time to Victoria Gomez.
Go ahead, Victoria.
Hi, so my name is Victoria, and, um, I'm representing the Albuquerque River Fighters. This plan is not well thought out, and the Bosque does not need to be destroyed when we can so easily preserve it. Keep it open, keep it free, keep it wild, and keep it ours, because it is ours. Four hundred, four hundred plus other people agree with me, because four hundred people showed up to the community meeting Saturday, uh, September fourth to express that they don't like this. And you cannot ignore that the overwhelming majority is against any kind of development in the Bosque. My team and I have taken the time to collect stories from the members of our community about what happens when public space is taken away. The effects are less than desirable. When our space is taken away, you're taking away our culture, and the cost of a broken community far outweigh the costs of tourists visiting. Clean the Bosque, yes. Pick up the litter, yes. And stop polluting our water, yeah. Other than that, let it be. We, as a community, want to work with the city council to create positive protection and conservation in the Bosque.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colombe Leland, Leland, followed by Mike Gomez, followed by Rob Chavis, followed by Simon Polakowski. And again, once your name has been called, please come to the front.
My name is Colombe Leland. I'd like to speak directly to, um, the, um, the resolution that was written by Ken Sanchez. On page four, section three, it says, "No interference." Nothing in this resolution...
Can you move back just a bit from the microphone? Step back just a little.
Oh, certainly. I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
I'm a little deaf, so I've been having trouble hearing everybody else.
Thank you.
Yeah, section three, "No interference." Nothing in this resolution is intended to limit or interfere with projects intended for the repair, maintenance, or upkeep of the Bosque. This section needs to be eliminated from the resolution. As it is so written, it nullifies the resolution. This is your major giant. Um, we're talking big tunnel loophole that will allow all of the trashing of the Bosque that the rest of this resolution is supposed, supposedly going to prevent. There isn't, by this section, um, if this section is not removed, there is no checking with an environmental protection committee. Anything can be labeled upkeep. Anything can be labeled maintenance. Roads can be widened. Trees can be cut down. You have, there's no reason for wasting everybody's time with this revolution if you do not eliminate that section. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Gomez, followed by Rob Chavis.
Just want to address you about the, uh, the Police Oversight Task Force. Uh, just, uh, make sure that you listen to their recommendations, because the Police Oversight Task Force has to be changed. I mean, I mean, the Police Oversight Committee has to be changed. I mean, the, the whole ordinance has to be gone through, and has to be made right for the citizens of Albuquerque, because right now it's just all one-sided. Just like, um, what I hear here. I mean, these people has, are coming here, I've been coming here for almost three years, and it's hard to get anybody to, to listen. And let me tell you, folks from the Sierra Club, the only way you're going to do anything is that you're going to have to have the courage to make signs, you're going to have to protest, you're going to have to go to the eleventh floor of the mayor's office and have a sit-in, all right? Because he's going to control everything. He is paying off his political people with the Bosque. He's a construction contractor. That is what he did, and he is going to be paying off all of his people who supported him. So, the only chance you have, you can speak as much as you can, is you got to call a press conference to go up to the eleventh floor with you, and you're going to have to have a sit-in, all right? And you're going to have to do it multiple times, because that's what we did for our families, of the people who were, uh, our, our kids that were unjustly killed by APD. So, you're going to have to do the same thing, because talking to these people, it can help, but remember, you've got loyalists, you've got four Republican loyalists here, and it takes a six to three to override the, the veto. And believe me, the mayor is going to veto everything that comes out of here that's not in his favor. You're going to have to get one of these Republican councilors to vote in your favor. It's your only chance you have.
Next speaker, Rob Chavis, followed by Simon Polakowski, followed by Alfonso Hernandez. Welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, and I'd like to ask all the councilors to please support, when it comes around, uh, the strongest possible resolution opposing the Rio Grande vision. And, um, I think that it's very straightforward, the current resolution. There may be this loophole, but wherever loophole exists, I think it should be closed. But even as it stands now, it's straightforward in the sense that, uh, it says, "Don't allow any improvements that do not go through the established Bosque plans that are laid out in the resolution that's currently, uh, before you." And the opposition to the mayor's Rio Grande vision i- is necessary, because his plan mistakenly sees the Bosque as purely a recreational area, or even a, a target for commercial development. Uh, you know, let's be honest, this was originally part of Albuquerque, the plan. It's a political document, and, you know, maybe the mayor thought that just as he favored some people up in the northeast with the Paseo del Norte, that, uh, he would also favor people who want development on the Bosque. But regardless of what the scenario was, I think it definitely needs to be opposed. Beyond that, unfortunately, the mayor is also, seems to be using, you know, if not directly, at least in some indirect way, the Parks and Recreation Department through Barbara Baca to block the dissemination of the information that, um, there was such an overwhelming opposition during the public meetings that were held back in September. And, um, I think it's unfortunate that Ms. Baca, in various public settings since then, has made it appear as if, um, there was no real common ground or consensus. But there was, and so, I guess to wrap it up, I would just say that, um, contrary to the administration's deceptions, this is not a done deal. You have the power to, um, dispose of it. Thank you.
Simon Polakowski, Alfonso Hernandez, and the last speaker will be Matt Picarello. Simon Polak...
Uh, councilors, thank you. Again, just as the mayor commodified free speech with his, uh, disembowelment of public access TV, he's now going to do the same with the Bosque. It's only, uh, it's not to be enjoyed, it's all to be used and abused and to be, you know, as capital, to make money, commercialize. It's not to be left alone. Free speech is only, uh, it's, well, there's no such thing as free speech anymore on public access. It's just a commodity that's to be bought and sold to the highest bidder or to the one who profits the most from it. And this is what's happening with the Bosque. And I agree with Mr. Gomez, uh, two minutes down here is not enough. Uh, you need to make some noise. And also, it'd be really great, you know, if council could travel from district to district, maybe to high schools, where people from that district could come at a decent time and see what actually goes on at city council. And maybe if it were mandatory for high school students, seniors to attend, and, you know, write a paper, what I observed and saw on council. When I, my last year of high school, I was on a military base, we were, we had to make a government, and we had, every senior civics class was a government, and then we had to talk with each other. And we're throwing our young people into citizenship without any idea of what really goes on. And I think it should be mandatory that seniors come down and see what actually goes on, ask questions, write a report, and if council could travel from high school to high school, and that people from those districts, because people have come down and said, you know, they complained, "This all happens downtown." Well, let's go to the Northeast Heights, the Southeast Heights, the West Mesa, North Valley, South Valley, and let the citizens of Albuquerque see what really goes on here at city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfonso Hernandez, followed by Matt Picarello, and he will be the last speaker.
Hello, uh, my name is Matt Picarello, and I'm the field organizer for Nextdoor.com, as well as an Albuquerque resident. I just wanted to take this time to let those in attendance in the council know about Nextdoor. There's sixty-six neighborhoods throughout the city that are currently using Nextdoor. Uh, I've been to a lot of neighborhood association meetings in the last few months. I know crime and safety is a big issue across the city. Uh, Nextdoor turns every member of the neighborhood into a neighborhood watchman, sort of a virtual neighborhood watch. Uh, in my own neighborhood, there's been a lot of discussion about the fuel spill. Um, so various neighborhood issues, if you live in the South Valley, maybe the Bosque issues would be something else you could discuss on there. Uh, in addition, there's a city program that Nextdoor has, where the city or the police department would be able to post messages into specific neighborhoods. So, just a, a way to get neighbors connected with each other, as well as the city connected with the neighborhoods. So, I'll make myself available for questions, maybe during the break, if anyone has any. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alfonso Hernandez is no longer here, so let's go ahead and proceed to announcements. Counselor Gordoño and Winter. Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, there will be a Police Oversight Task Force meeting on Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, at five-thirty PM in the council committee room, ninth floor, room nine-zero-eight-one.
And Counselor Gordoño.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be an Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Water Utility Authority meeting on Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, at five PM here in the Vincent E. Grealygo chambers.
We are now under item eleven, the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Counselor Gibson or Betten? Counselor Betten.
Well, uh, Counselor Gibson raised some questions about this, maybe, I don't know if there are any other responses to that. The, the question that I had with regard to the Housing and Neighborhood Economic Development Committee has to do with, uh, with its long-range plan. Because the, because the committee has not met recently, um, the plan is certainly in a, uh, in a need of updating, and the council has the authority to amend that plan with the input of this, uh, committee. So, I think it's, I think it's very important. My more general question is, is just looking at the more recent appointees to the committee, since it, it very much has to do with, uh, the committee very much has to do with, um, using the proceeds...
Excuse me, counselor?
Yes.
Can we pull these things off and then have this discussion after we vote on them?
Do you want to pull those, pull, any particular appointees that you're wanting to?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not wanting to pull them. I'm, I'm asking a question with regard to, with regard to the, uh, the process in general. Um, so, I, I do, I have that, and I also had some comments on the bills that I was withdrawing.
Okay.
But, but the concern, the concern about this is just really the makeup of the committee. It seemed as though it's a, it's been kind of a, a very narrow demographic of people who, and, and hats off to anybody who wants to serve on these committees, uh, who are serving on the committee. So, they, they do, they are people from this, the pocket of poverty, but the pocket of poverty is a very broad and large area, and includes many well-to-do neighborhoods, as well as neighborhoods that are in more need. And so, it, it does kind of bring forward the question of, you know, what is, what, what does this committee look like? And the only thing that, that's really, um, spelled out is there should be a, a representative from the Brelis neighborhood, because of, uh, one of the, one of the funding sources, uh, which was a clawback in the Brelis neighborhood. But just, just wanted to bring it to the attention, not to oppose these appointments, but I think it's important that the council look at this committee and, and that the administration, I would hope, be very cognizant of, of having a representative committee that represents the, the demographics and, and the, uh, racial makeups of, of the pocket of poverty. Thank you, Mr. President, and I don't know if...
Counselor Gibson.
Counselor Gibson has anything else on it? Counselor Gibson has anything else on it?
Okay, then let's go ahead and move the, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion any second?
And if I may, Mr. President, just again, I wanted to, I had three items that were withdrawn. It looked like I was withdrawing half of the, of my agenda here. But just a quick explanation of the withdrawals. I mentioned the police downtown, the police president's withdrawal, and again, I want to thank Assistant Chief Page and the chief and our area commander for working with me on the downtown. I think we're going to have much better coverage in the short term, and we'll see how that goes. And then we also are withdrawing the, the policy to require plat, review by Albuquerque Public Schools, and that has to do, I think, with, with the progress that we've made with APS. I think we're seeing some progress as far as the passage of the legislation that we passed last time around to work cooperatively with them. And so as long as that's proceeding forward, I was willing to withdraw this bill, R-13256. And then last but not least is the withdrawal of the application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority or New Mexico Finance Authority. Basically, the story on that is that the city was interested in applying for a grant under that program, and it turns out that we're really not in a position to qualify, so that's the reason for that withdrawal. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion any second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, oppose no, that carries unanimously. There are no public hearings this evening, there are no approvals. We are now under final action, and Council Vice President Jones, R-8.
Thank you, Mr. President. R-8 is establishing a legislative policy for the City of Albuquerque for the 2014th legislative session of the New Mexico Legislature. I would like to move a floor substitute for, I have to move the bill first, right?
Let's move the bill first, yes.
Move approval of R-8.
You have a motion any second for R-8?
Then I would like to move a floor substitute for R-8 that the staff is distributing. We've just adjusted and changed a few things. I think you've all seen this except for one change in it, and that is to put the Paseo del Volcan back on the legislative priority list.
We have a motion any second for floor substitute R-8. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, oppose no, that carries. And we have one individual signed up to speak. Tad Naminski? I think he has left the building.
No, he's right there.
Tad Naminski? You're, you signed up to speak on this bill? Okay, that's fine. Council Vice President Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Therefore, I move approval of floor substitute for R-8.
We've already moved and passed that, we're back on the bill.
I'm, okay, move the bill as substituted, R-8.
Are there any questions? See none, all those in favor of R-8 as substituted? Say yes.
Yes.
Yes, oppose no, that carries unanimously. Now we are on item E, Council Benton, R-17.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move a do-pass of R-17. This is a City of Albuquerque project amendments to the Mid-Region Council of Governments for consideration of federal funding in the proposed fiscal year 14 transportation improvement program. I move a do-pass.
We have a motion any second, and we have amendment, Council Benton?
We do have an amendment that's being passed out right now, and I, do we have anyone to speak on the, on the bill, Mr. President?
Yes, we do, we have Tad Naminski.
Okay. Well, let me...
And he's going to pass. Go and proceed.
Okay, well, let me go ahead and move floor amendment number one, and, but this particular item was brought to me at the request of the administration. This has to do with keeping whole some federal funding that we have under what's called the Great Streets line item under the Transportation Improve, Transportation Improvement Program. And the, the intent of this is to, to keep that funding whole by using it on the Paseo del Norte project, and, and then the originally intended use of the, of the funds would be, would be, make use of some existing funding within the transportation tax, excess transportation tax funds that would keep that 12th Menol project whole. So I'll move floor amendment number one.
We have a motion any second for floor amendment number one to R-1417. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, oppose no, that carries unanimously. We're back on the bill.
Urge your support if there are no other questions or concerns.
Councilor Gurdunio, I think, has a question.
Right. Councilor Benton, did you say that this money would be then allocated to Paseo and I-25?
Yes, in order to, in order to expend the money this year, and Mr. Riordan might want to explain it or someone from the administration, but in order, in order to spend the funds this year, we've got to move it to a qualified project that already has federal funding. So it's a lot like what's done regularly at the COG where in order to make sure that our region, you know, expends the money that is due to us, we will fund a different project and then fund through a different source the project from which, for which the clock was ticking.
And maybe Mr. Riordan wants to answer this. What assurances do we have that we can get that money restored or reallocated or...
Mr. Riordan?
Mr. President, Councilor Gurdunio, there's going to be three different options that we're going to be going after on this one. So if this amendment is successful this evening, we're going to be adding a new portion to the project that will increase both the local activity, the local access around Paseo and I-25. It'll allow a better bicycle pedestrian access, which has been called for by some guy back in Gartsey Committee members that you've heard speak here, and it's going to allow for some bus mass transit to be able to have better access to the rail runner station by including a new roadway and, as part of this project. It wasn't originally included because we didn't think the property owners would agree to it, but after negotiations, they have in principle agreed to having this road go through their property. So that's about a $2 million project that we utilize some of this funding. The remaining part of the funding is our, our proposal to, to the DOT would be either we, if we provide this federal funding to the project, we'll get some of our local money back that we could assign to projects, or we possibly landscape the project or do some more of the improvements that were originally planned for Paseo and I-25.
And, Mr. President, Mr. Riordan, and this is the only federal, the only project that qualifies?
Mr. President and Councilor Gurdunio, we went through a list of about six or seven potential projects that we could assign this money to for the City of Albuquerque, and none of those other projects would we be in a position that we're in any better than we are in 12th Menol Channel Road now. All those other projects are either fully funded with the current money we have now or in a position where we were in the design phase of those and couldn't implement the construction money now to utilize that money in those projects.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Well, back to my original question, is you say we do have three avenues that we could not recoup, but at least gain that money back?
Mr. President, Councilor Gurdunio, we have, there's three opportunities on how we're going to implement that money as part of the Paseo project, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There are no further questions, Council Benton to close.
Yeah, and just, just to make clear, the amendment that we passed makes, makes it clear that, that this is still within the, within the intent of the Great Streets money, which is basically what we call complete streets of looking at pedestrian qualities of, of the roadways and so forth. So due to the amendment that we passed, that is, makes it a little bit more specific as to how it would be spent at Paseo del Norte or in I-25, so urge your support.
We have a motion any second to adopt R-17 as amended. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, oppose no, that carries unanimously. If there is no further business before this council...
We're done.
This meeting is adjourned.